Good evening and welcome to the July 28, 2015 work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome the viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Vicki Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, the invocation will be delivered by Commissioner Carpenter and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Price.
Please stand, please. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that we've received as a citizen of this country and we thank you for those leaders that went before and provided us with the Constitution and laws that we can live together as a people and we thank you for that. We ask you blessings as we continue that we preserve the freedoms and liberties that's been presented to us. Now, we ask our blessings as we go through the work of this county commission that we will do things that are in keeping with your will. These things we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. First item is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards, and Certificates. First up is Commissioner Carpenter, the presentation of certificates to the Gaston County Firefighters with 20-plus years of volunteer service. After that, we'll do a little change in the agenda. He'll also present Commissioner Williams' resolution to award the Service Sidearm and Badge to retired Police Officer Sandra Fisher. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you. Well, I have the honor of recognizing Josh Crisp. Is Josh here?
Don't see him.
Okay, this is for his many years of dedicated service to the Agriculture Center Volunteer Ford Department and we will get this to him. Okay, is Officer Sandra Fisher here? You and your family and friends and others, Chief? All of you come up here. This lady's done so much for us. Come on up here. I'm gonna try to read this without my glasses on. This resolution is to award a Service Sidearm and Badge to retired Police Officer III Class Sandra Fisher. Sandra R. Fisher. Whereas Officer Sandra Fisher is retired, well, she's already retired from the Gaston County Police Department, July 1, 2015, after serving 29 years with Gaston County. And whereas Officer Sandra Fisher has requested that she be awarded the Service Sidearm Heckler &amp; Co., model HK-45, serial number HKU-023760, and the badge worn during her service with Gaston County Police Department pursuant to General Statute 20-187.2 and the Board's Resolution, Number 259 dated October 27, 1983. Now therefore be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the badge worn by Officer Fisher and her Service Sidearm Heckler &amp; Co., model HK-45, serial number HKU-023760, be declared service equipment. The badge worn by Officer Fisher be given to her in remembrance of her service with the Gaston County Police Department. The Service Sidearm Heckler &amp; Co., model HK-45, serial number HKU-023760, be permanently retired by the Gaston County Police Department and offered to Officer Fisher for the first, for the purchase price of $1,000. No, that's $1, excuse me. Give you a heart attack. The Assistant Chief of the Gaston County Police Department is directed to award Officer Fisher with the Service Sidearm and Badge as specified and worn by her during her service to Gaston County in accordance with the North Carolina General Statutes and the policies of the Board. Be it further resolved, pardon me, that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners wish to express their sincere gratitude for dedicated service of Police Officer III, Sandra R. Fisher, retired, and wish her the best in her retirement to be adopted the 28th day of July 2015. And we'd love for you to say a few words for her.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Thank you. Thank you, Board. First of all, I want to thank God above for protecting me for those 29 or so years, well, 53 years to be honest, but 29 here with the department, protecting me from seen and unknown danger. I want to thank the Board for your support of the Gaston County Police Department. The whole time I've been there, been on our side, I felt that you guys have had our back. And most of all, I want to thank my family and my friends back here for their support for the last 30 years. My father here, my two sisters, and my mother-in-law, sort of, my brother and Captain Melton and all, Chief Ramy and Mark and the rest of the guys behind me. And just thank you guys for everything you've done for me and I really do appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra? I don't know if Chief Ramy knows, but we're gonna have a trouble up in my end of the town. That's my number-one lady right there that protects me. You've been up in that area and I want to say thank you, Sandra, for what you've done. I know many nights I come by there and you're out there and thank you for your service.
Was that protecting the public from him?
That's right. Thank you so much.
Hey, I've known you since you were in high school-
That's right.
So I don't want to start telling anything.
Enjoy your retirement, come back any time. Thank you so much.
Well, Mr. Brown, it's appropriate that you said that because on behalf of the Chief's office and the men and women of the Gaston County Police Department and certainly the citizens, Sandra, we thank you for your 30 years of dedication. We thank you for looking out for Zone 2 and especially Mr. Brown and his chaos that he created up there. It's not very often that we get to get up here and recognize someone for 30 years of dedication. But for us, it's a great honor and a great pleasure to have had you for those 30 years. You've always exhibited high integrity and dedication to the job and to the citizens of Gaston County and certainly to your coworkers. And we also want to thank your family for giving us to you for those 30 years and I know we've taken you away from lots of opportunities and family events, but again, we do appreciate your dedication. And with that, here's your weapon-
Thank you very much.
And your badge-
Thank you.
And Captain Melton will pay the dollar.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Thank you.
Get ready to run.
Our next item is a commendation by Commissioner Keeger for Mr. Joe De Priest. Joe, oh, here you are. Thank you. I knew you were here. I walked up with you. Joe is one of our local former newspaper reporters for the Charlotte Observer and in here, when I read it, it tells how you appreciate telling a good story. And I appreciate your writing over the years, but unfortunately, there are too many writers that make their own stories, but you weren't one of them. If you would, Joe, let me read this. Whereas Mr. Joe De Priest, one of our region's most talented journalists, retired in January of this year, leaving behind a prolific body of work with almost 50 years of bringing the news to citizens in our region. Whereas, as a young man, Joe De Priest got his start in journalism as a high school senior in Shelby. He worked briefly for the Cleveland Times before heading off to Gardner-Webb University and ultimately graduating from the UNC School of Journalism in 1967. And whereas, Mr. De Priest was drafted during the Vietnam War and he joined the Army for a three-year stretch as a military journalist. He served in Vietnam from 1968 through 69 as a reporter for the MACV Observer and he finished his military stint with the 197th Infantry Brigade at Fort Benning, Georgia, in the Public Information Office. And whereas, after the military, Mr. De Priest settled back at the Shelby Star where he turned out stories for Cleveland County for nearly 20 years. Whereas, Mr. De Priest finished out his dynamic career with the Charlotte Observer's Gaston Observer's Edition. He spent nearly 25 years on the beat covering various stories, profiles, as well as government and police news. His awareness of the role that journalism plays in the lives of citizens was keenly evident in the many articles he produced. And whereas, Mr. De Priest is well-known for his great love of storytelling, but he is also well-respected among professional colleagues. Various community leaders and the citizens of Gaston County for his commitment to his trade, the quality of his writing, and for his fairness and objectivity in providing valuable information to the citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends and honors Mr. Joe De Priest for his long and esteemed journalism career and for his professional and compassionate style of reporting the news to the citizens of this region and this will be adopted later this evening in the consent agenda. And congratulations on your retirement and I hope it's just a wonderful, long, happy time. Would you like to address the Board?
I just want to say thank you to the Board and this is an honor to me and I really appreciate it. And while it is true that I've retired from the daily grind, chasing everything that happens, I hadn't retired from storytelling. I will be back and I'm benefit, I am already back as a freelance writer and I'll be telling more stories about Gaston County and the region.
Thank you.
Joe, I just want to make one comment. In an age where most elected officials don't really have a lot of respect for the media, I just wanted to publicly say thank you for the integrity you have always shown. Anytime that you would call and want an interview, you would print exactly what we said. You would even call back and say, "I want to make sure that this is exactly what you're saying." And that's a rarity with newspapers today doing everything they can to sell papers for somebody to actually want to report the truth. And I have found you to be a person of character and integrity and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Tracy. That means a lot.
Our next item is Certificates of Appreciation for Public Service. It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commission to honor citizens who have unselfishly given them their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our Boards or Commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Beverly Dixon and Donna Hamel with the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Mr. Chris Howe and Jerry McLean, Family Advisory Board. Billy Wackawack, as Commissioner Brown would call him, with the Travel and Tourism Advisory Board. Mel Collins and Rebecca McLean and Kay Texera with the Workforce Development Board. Our next item is Citizen Recognition. A portion of the Board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens an opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. The comment period is not intended to require the Commission and/or staff to answer any impromptu questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Comments will be limited to five minutes. As I call your name, please stand to the podium, state your name and address. The first citizen signed up to speak is Mr. Johnny Denton.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I have some concerns I'd like to go over with you. I sent, I think, every Board member an email-
Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Johnny Denton, 2610 Cherokee Court, Gastonia, North Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
I sent an email to Commissioners concerning the UDO. I'm a civil engineer and land surveyor in Gaston County, lifelong resident, and I dealt with the UDO in 2009. It submitted a subdivision for review under the UDO and had a multitude of issues come back from DOT in particular and some of the other review agencies about conflicts between the UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, and the standards that DOT requires for subdivision roads. The street trees, the sidewalk, and the curb and gutter were three of the major issues with the UDO. DOT doesn't maintain street trees or sidewalks. The curb and gutter in the UDO ordinance that's required is not an approved NC DOT curb and gutter. But, you know, in 2009, that particular subdivision got pulled from consideration because of some funding issues with the developer. I recently submitted for a new client, submitted a subdivision for review, and those same issues still exist today. My concern is, staff knows those issues exist, nothing's been done to address them. The UDO itself, the ordinance, the requirements of the curb, the requirements of the sidewalk, requirements of the street trees, obviously aren't conducive to development because these two subdivisions are the only subdivisions that's been submitted under the UDO. It's my guess that people have looked at that ordinance and have walked away from Gaston County because of the restrictions in that ordinance. There's also issues with the workability of the UDO with the environmental regulations that are in place that are mandated by the state. When you put in curb and gutter in a subdivision, that stormwater's captured in that curb. It's not allowed to filter through a vegetative swell, a side ditch, a grass-lined swell. So it forces the developer to have to install, at a major cost, have to install stormwater ponds, either sand filters or wet ponds. I'm asking for assistance from the county commission to direct staff to look at changing the UDO, to remove the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, and the street tree requirements. I feel like it would be a benefit to the county in increased development. It'd be an environmental benefit without having a bunch of ponds everywhere that homeowners would have to maintain. These sidewalks, the street trees are gonna have to be maintained by these homeowners. I just feel like there's issues with the UDO that need to be addressed. I've talked, I've talked with staff, had conversations with David Williams and Ron Smith. Their directive to me was to make those changes and resubmit those changes to them for review. It would go before Planning Board. And that's okay if that's the way it's supposed to work. I'm okay with that. We can get through that process. I don't feel like it needs to go that route. I feel like staff knows what these issues are. They can make those changes and make those recommendations to the Planning Board. I'm just asking for this Board to help facilitate that process. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denton. Yeah. Earl, can you look into this matter and report back to the Board on these specific things? Why do we have the street trees, the sidewalks, the curb and gutter? If we did away with those, what's the importance of keeping those? Why do we even have to have that and what would it look like if we took those away? Can you get that information together and maybe send an email out to the Board?
I'd be happy to do that. I think in general, you know, stormwater mitigation is part of the concern and then appearance standards that were attempted to be presented under the UDO scenario when it was first established, but we can certainly follow up on that. And I believe the process, though, would be to go through, you know, a review process with the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, can I add a side to that as well?
Mr. O'Brien.
I hate that. Ms. Hamilton, do you know when the UDO was put in place? Just top of your head?
It took effect July 2008.
Since 2008, a lot of things have changed. I would, if it's possible, to get a, some people together, like we've been doing on other things, get some information because I hear this a lot from not just Mr. Denton, I've heard it from other people in the community. And I'd like to try to see where we are, even if I have to sit on that board, to try to see where we can, just sort of try to get some heads together to find out how we can do things in Gaston County and see if the UDO needs to be somewhat subjected to some different things. And I just wanted to add that to it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think a good question to ask is since the UDO's been in effect, how many people have built developments in Gaston County in the county? And if I'm correct, it may be zero. And that should be about all you need to know. Zero. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, and when we developed the UDO, we were working with all the towns and cities to try to make that as uniform as possible, so I think we got some, we need to have that discussion with them also.
Because what may work in Belmont may not necessarily work out in the county. And again, I think the pilling thing is since the implementation of the UDO, no, unless I'm wrong-
Well, I just want to make one-
No development, period, not one. That's what, going on 20 years?
I'm gonna ask one question to you. Name the hottest town or city inside of Gaston County. It's Belmont. And guess what? They don't have the UDO.
We got our own UDO.
Yeah, it's worse.
It's worse.
But with that said, I do think it's something, it's been talked about. I've had plenty of developers send me emails, phone calls, and just say, you know, this is just too restrictive for out in the county. So if you could get that and maybe we can get some resolve, I don't mind going through the Planning Board, but at the end of the day, we vote to make decisions. Maybe we can meet, look through these things, and maybe move some of this along. Just my opinion. Next up, Ms. Laurel Hamilton.
May I comment before we get off?
Commissioner Price.
I know one of the concerns when the UDO was being developed was with curb and gutter, there were some concerns about a developer, if it wasn't in place and there was runoff and everyone who was downhill from the development suffered and there was no retention pond, no safeguard for people around the development suffering from the runoff from various properties. So I know that was one of the concerns with having the curb and gutter and having the retention basin, but I mean, I don't know that the UDO, I mean, there may be some things in it that need to be changed and I'm not against it, but I do think we need to look at the borders, what a developer leaves and leaves behind after they are so-called through. That's all. Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Laurel Hamilton.
Hi, Laura Hamilton, 107 Bristol County Court in Gastonia. Thank you for letting me come up to speak tonight. I'm speaking once again about the Gaston County Employee Health Insurance issues. Yet, to this day, I've heard of no changes and I've heard of no changes that are actually affecting me. Resolution 94-282, Guidelines for Employee Notification of Personnel Policy Modifications, must be posted on departmental bulletin boards pre-IT information. Employees must be notified. Employees must be given the opportunity to voice concerns to the Board of Commissioners before voting on changes. I believe changing spouses on health insurance benefits is, would probably qualify as personnel policy modifications since that is one of my benefits as an employee. Discrimination is treating the same people in the same group differently for different reasons. In April of 2015, the uproar with the Board of Commissioners giving themselves lifetime insurance was going on. At the same time, I believe it was quietly going on that the insurance for one half of the spouses approximately are gonna be removed. In May of 28, I received dependent audit paperwork from a third-party company. The first paragraph in there states, "As we communicated previously," HR has yet to communicate what this information actually went on to be telling me. The first mention of dependent ineligibility was in this paperwork I received from a third-party entity. The signature on the bottom of the cover sheet was from Pam Overcash. On June 8, there was an email sent out to GCR, which is pretty much all the employees. There's a couple groups, HR and the manager's office uses for such spam email to all of its employees. It mentioned that the premiums, the upcoming premiums, the county contribution, the healthcare assessments are back. The fourth paragraph in that email said, "There are no other changes to the health plan." It also gave us the premium options that were coming due to us. June 16, received a second notice for the dependent audit because I had not yet done it and this one was actually threatening of disciplinary actions up to removal of benefits and a few other things. It was not a very friendly reminder notice. On July 8, I did do the audit. The audit told me that my spouse was denied coverage. Not one word yet about policy changes had been given to me from HR. July 27, an email from HR went out to everyone about the open enrollment how-to. It told in the email that if the spouse was not eligible, then I must elect a new coverage. If I did not elect a new coverage, then the county would take out the cost that I'm currently under that included my spouse. So the county would then be taking out more money than what the new premium said it would if I did not do it when I did not make any of the changes. The dependent audit is requiring paperwork from the families that even federal government doesn't require a family to do, such as have joint financial accounts or file joint tax reforms. One employee actually had to do an affidavit because they don't have that joint information because they chose not to do it when they got married. One employee had some dependents put on the plan that they never had on their plan and this has all come out in the last couple of months. Most of us who have spouses on the plan just want to keep our spouses on the plan. If the county can't afford to keep spouses, then how can they afford to keep half of the spouses when it's approximately half the spouses are no longer gonna be able to be afforded? It's not a wonder that the county can't keep good employees sometimes. Longevity was taken away in 2002. Retirees lost their health insurance for all new hires in 2002. We've been a training county. I don't see it changing when you're taking spouses away also. That affects the current people who are here as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Next up is Mr. Tim Goss.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Tim Goss. I'm District Manager for Duke Energy for the Charlotte Region and I wanted to come here tonight to personally say thank you for your support on a project- that, that, that we introduced last year. I came to the Commission and, and asked for an easement for our Gastonia Operations Center located on US Highway 321. The significance of the project was that we needed rear access to that facility that would enable us to move our service vehicles and line trucks with pole trailers and other equipment in and out of that facility without having to directly pull out onto Highway 321, which as you know, is an extremely busy highway. And as a result of your support and, and, and the work of Donnie Hicks, we, we've now reached a, a place in the project where with the approval of that easement, we're going to not only build a new access to the rear of the property, but we're going to invest over a million dollars in the existing facility. We're going to outfit it, upgrade it. And, and I guess what I'm saying to you is, it was a very business-friendly move that you made to support this. And, and it's a, it's a matter of safety for our employees and for those people who, those thousands of vehicles who move up and down US Highway 321 every day. So without question, you've helped the, the local economy, you've provided an additional layer of safety and, and, and certainly the, the investment and the confidence of the consumer. So I wanted to personally thank you for your support, and we're getting ready to move forward with the project now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Our next item is State of the County Health Presentation by Mr. Chris Dobbins, D H H S Director.
Okay. They're trusting me with technology, it looks like. This could be interesting.
And the next item is access one year later. If you want to, just lead into that.
That will be okay.
That's the first one?
Cool.
Excellent. So they have what they need?
They're good.
All right. Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, obviously, I have some challenges with delegation of authority tonight. I'm covering for Mr. Eden. Mr. Williams would love to have fun with that tonight if he was here. Appreciate the opportunity to bring everybody in the county up to date on where we are with the State of the County's health. Between our community health assessments, which have been moved every three years, the State of the County's health report is a yearly update of where we are with that assessment. The community health assessment is a multi-partner review of our health, including United Way, Caramont, and many of our other local partners. So this evening, I'll give you an update on where we are. Certainly, the Health and Human Services entity is a portion of our county, but we're not the sole entity that has impact on these outcomes. We are a facilitator and a reporter, and in many ways, hopefully, an advocate for improvement on many of these issues. So I certainly hope that we can bring some good news this evening. But if the Commission has any questions, we'd be try, we will try to answer those questions along the way. So what is the S O C? The S O C is just that, the State of the County's health. Unfortunately, the Robert Wood Johnson report that comes out annually that addresses the health rankings of counties throughout the nation is something that has certainly brought a lot of interest to the number attached to counties. Our number in the last couple of years has been somewhat in the area of 75 to 79 out of 100 counties in North Carolina. One of the challenges with that ranking is that data is somewhere between four and six years old. So it's really hard to get a gauge on, are your efforts really working when you're working with that kind of data that is that far behind? So what we try to do with the, the State of the County's health is use our own local information to try to present a little clearer picture and a more up-to-date picture. Our goal here is to update our local partners as well as our citizens on where we are with those efforts. Some quick facts, these, these numbers from our report in 2009 compared to 2013 when our last community health assessment was done, you'll see a slight increase in population. But the real line that I want to bring your attention to is the percent of population that is living in poverty or moved to that level over the, over that four-year span. The level of poverty is defined as, just a moment. For a family of four, the total income of that family, $23,850. So an increase of almost 25% in that area. Certainly, a lot of that has to do with the economic downturn over those, over that time span. But as you might well imagine, resources contribute greatly to the health of our community. A downturn had a very dramatic effect on the health of our, our citizens. As such, our, what used to be known as the Former Board of Health directs the priorities of the agency. As you well know, we have consolidated, so now that is the Health and Human Services priorities. But at the time of this report, when this was created, the four priorities of the board are, as you see here, obesity, improvement of behavioral health services, reduction of teen pregnancy, and certainly addressing the tobacco, alcohol, and substance abuse challenges in our community. The information that you see here, adult obesity, is one of those areas that we control as individuals. Certainly, there are a lot of dynamics associated with obesity. Some of them mental health-related, some of them resource-related, some of them motivation-related. And one of the challenges that we're trying to work on is instituting and creating a culture of wellness where good habits are formed at a very early age. We're doing a lot of that work with our education community as well as with Caramont, so we're very excited about the potential there. But as you see here, some of the programs that associated with the agency, our Highland Health Center Farmer's Market, we brought the Farmer's Market to the Highland area. Our Community Garden, also in the Highland area, one of our underserved areas in the community. Let Me Run is the male equivalent of what most of us know as Girls on the Run, so we're very excited about that. Our efforts in Eat Smart Move More and Way Less have had some positive impact. Our WIC program, also known as Women, Infants, and Children, is trying to get children and young mothers associated with good health habits and nutrition at a very early age, making sure that our children get off to a great start in regards to health. One of our success stories we talk about often is our impact in the teen pregnancy or unwanted teen pregnancy area. I think one of the things that is most telling in this category, while it is a priority and it is something we've been working on, it is also a reflection of these health issues do not change overnight. It takes dedicated resources and time associated to, to realize those results. And the slides that you see before you there is an example of that. When this county was awarded the CDC grant some five years ago, what we currently know is Gaston Youth Connected, the goal of the program was to reduce teen pregnancies by 10%. As of this year, we have reduced teen pregnancies by 40%. I wish we could take full credit for that. I would be remiss if I didn't give credit to the former director, Ms. Colleen Bridger, and her efforts in applying resources to that area. So essentially, what we're reaping now, five years later, are efforts that were instituted almost 10 years ago. So that's the kind of work and the level of resources that are needed to affect change in these health outcomes. It's not an overnight fix. And I know in today's world, that's what most of us are looking for. Unfortunately, it takes time, it takes resources, and it takes all hands on deck. So while certainly this is an emotional topic, depending on where you're from or your position on the issue, this is an excellent example of what it takes to affect health outcomes. One of the other areas that we're somewhat excited and proud about is our work when it comes to tobacco cessation as well as smoke-free restaurants. We certainly are pleased that the, that North Carolina has instituted smoke-free restaurant law. That has gone a long way in, in moving our health in a positive direction. But we also are experiencing new challenges in this area. I'm sure the Commission is very familiar with the term vaping. That is something that we as an entity are looking into, working with the CDC, making sure that we have a full understanding of what vaping is and how it might negatively not only affect the individual, but also, much like secondhand smoke, how does the vaping affect those individuals around the vapor? So work still being done on that. We're not excited about vaping, I'll be honest with you. But certainly, we want to make sure we've done our due diligence in making sure that we're not infringing upon the rights of individuals, but protecting the rights of everyone and all citizens, much like we did with the smoke-free restaurants law and efforts. Maybe one of the biggest challenges that we have, not only here in Gaston County, but also in the state, is our work with behavioral health and behavioral health resources. The ability to connect an individual with the resources to deal with these very complicated issues is a challenge for the most educated and nimble of individuals familiar with our healthcare system. It's an even greater challenge for those individuals who might have a physical or a mental illness to navigate the system. So certainly, our, our local community partners entity, as well as the state, is constantly trying to figure out a good resource. But what I would advocate for here is, while we have obviously maximized Health and Human Services, the third leg of the stool that has to be incorporated and needs to be considered in dealing with our health issues is our behavioral health piece. And anything that the Commission or our elected officials can do to advocate for greater flexibility and resources in that area would be greatly appreciated. Mortality, these are our leading causes of death currently in Gaston County. What, I guess if there is a silver lining with this slide, a very large majority of these causes are controllable. You know, breast cancer, these are things that, a lot of these things can be affected by smoking cessation, healthier eating, reducing obesity, increasing your physical activity. All of those have a dramatic impact on these causes of death. The years of life lost, and I wish I'd have put this slide in here, but I was looking at it earlier today, the years of lives lost from the east side of the county to the west side of the county is 10 years. If you live in what you would consider as Belmont, you are 10 years, you have 10 years of more life expectancy than someone who lives on the far west side of Gaston County. That speaks to access, resources, walkable communities, access to healthcare. Those are the kinds of things that we need to use data and resources to address. Now, that doesn't mean just because you live in Belmont, Commissioner Price, that you're going to outlive me by 10 years. However, it is certainly something that we are looking at as an agency and certainly something that it bears considerable address moving forward. Some of the new initiatives that we're looking at as an agency, we have completed the rollout of our electronic health records. This is our effort to move forward with technology and hopefully reducing paper, increasing our access to information, and providing better health services and deliverables. We've also established within the agency a informatics team. This is a further expansion of being able to deliver services to the community of need, not a blanket approach to the entire county. So if you have an issue in a certain zip code or a certain couple of zip codes, it would stand to reason that you tailor those resources to that community. It helps you better use that, those limited resources to address it, as well as if you're not got a problem in Belmont, why would you deliver services in Belmont? Go to the area of need, focus those resources. This team helps us identify where those neighborhoods are, what those issues are, and allows us to better dedicate our limited resources. We've also been selected by the CDC to be a pilot county for engaging young men in clinical services. This is a program that really does bring to attention the contribution that men bring to a lot of our health outcomes. Most of our services prior to this have been dedicated to our females, which is a, you're implying that the woman is the only person that is part of this solution. So we're very excited about bringing programs to address this. And then last but not least, this is an opportunity to really stress the healthiness in our community by engaging our Farmer's Market and using our EBT cards to be able to purchase healthy food. So we're very excited about that partnership and the support of our, our local partners. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our State of the County's Health Report. I'll be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Price?
Mr. Dobbins, could you, if you have any updated information, could you, the slides you had on behavioral health, do you know if the legislature in Raleigh has come to a compromise on the, the behavioral health access, availability, paying for through their Medicaid funding?
I do not know the answer to that. Possibly Rhett might have more information on it. But I will tell you, one of the challenges that, as a government entity, that we're, we're really struggling with is the potential reorganization of mental health once again, going from seven districts to, I believe the current model is four. So you're talking about an entity that is going to provide services for approximately 25 counties. It's a challenge now with about 15. So we're really trying to get our minds wrapped around what that will look like. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to your specific question, but I certainly would like to know what the plan is moving forward. Because integrating those services with either health or human services, there's always a mental health component, almost exclusively with one of those issues. So I'm sorry, I don't have the answer.
I didn't know if you had, at our last Gaston Family Health Service meeting, Director Spencer had mentioned that the House budget had included it and the Senate budget had not at this point.
Right.
But what, the Senate budget was wanting reform going to the four super districts.
Correct.
But did not want to fund it until the districts had been established. So that was kind of a catch 22, but I didn't know if you had any-
No, sir, I don't. I wish I had the answer to that. As you know, obviously, they're still working on the budget. My guess is that's one of the playing cards yet to be played, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Dobbins, for coming out tonight. Question, just from my aspect of it, I've always been this, we, we did it last year, and I was going to bring it up again about the WIC. I, I call it fraud, but it's a lot of things. Is there anything that we can do as our county alone that separates? I know I had asked before from this board to send up a resolution where they had a picture ID on the card because we, we kept seeing so much fraud in it. Is there something that we can do to help? I know that that's a great idea of having at the Farmer's Market and different places. I've seen a lot of great things happen under your tutelage over there, and I'm very happy to see those results. But I want to know, what can we do? Is there anything else that we could do that we could help you with from up here on this side?
Commissioner Brown, thank you for your question. I, I think the challenge becomes, it's almost impossible to put forth a foolproof, fraud-proof program. It seems like, it's almost like radar detectors. Every time a radar detector comes out that can identify the, the most current police laser, the police come out with a better laser. So there's always somebody trying to be one head or one step ahead of that game, so to speak. I, I think what I'm encouraged by is, if somebody's going to commit fraud to buy good, healthy food, I'm going to be a little less concerned with that. May not be politically correct, but I will tell you, we've put a lot of effort into the fraud review. And what we're finding is, we've placed people in supermarkets, we've placed reviews in supermarkets. And a lot of times, what is happening is, an individual is purchasing food. However, only certain portions of that food can be purchased with certain portions of money and/or the EBT card. So what an assumption is, is they bought everything with that EBT card, possibly adult beverages, possibly things that you wouldn't consider healthy. But we certainly are monitoring that. So back to your original question, while photo ID is something that could possibly help and possibly move us forward in that area, there's also a cost associated with that, the cost of issuing cards throughout the state. I would advocate for ID identification, personal identification. I would be more than happy to work with the board to sponsor a resolution that would ask for that. But if you feel that that's the one-all solution to fraud, I'm sorry, I don't think-
I guess my question was just what can we do to help your-
Right.
-services overall in general, plus that right there, just because that's something that I see, five-hour energy drink, no pun intended there, but-
I, I, I understand. What is the proper use of that card? What is the proper use of that card and the proper purchases authorized by that card? We continue to walk that line. Certainly, I appreciate the commission's support, and we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Keger?
I just want to make a couple of comments. Thinking back, serving those years, that DSS does have its advantages in trying to recall information. I know the, oh, probably, how long have we consolidated now?
Two years, sir.
Two years. So probably three or four years ago, we were given a bunch of information one time regarding the aging of the various counties, and we looked specifically at the Charlotte region. I think there were eight or nine counties. And one of the things that stood out is that Gaston County by far, by miles, led the region in the growth of the senior community, where a lot of counties were growing, you know, from 30 to 40 or 35 to 42. Our highest growth by far was from 60 to 75-year-olds in Gaston County. A lot of that, I think, has to do with the manufacturing that was here forever. But if you look at the list, I happened to pull up the list of the 100 counties and how we were ranked, of course. If you look at the top five, six, or seven, or eight, whatever, New Hanover, Mecklenburg, Wake was number two, Orange County number one, Buncombe, Watauga, College Towns, there's a higher density of young people in those things. So, you know, this, as far as I'm concerned, is skewed for the fact that it's not, it can't be equal among counties.
Not all counties are created equal.
And when you have the largest growth of one of the largest counties in the state, 60 to 75 years old, and you've got a college community like Watauga County or Orange County, it's just not apples to apples. Now, there's some good data in there, but it's not as bad as it looks, because we have a much higher percentage of seniors. And I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, it says on here, we're 77, but when you've got the largest growth of your county over 60, you're going to have more health issues than the counties that are growing from 30 to 40 or 32 to 39, whatever the different categories are. So I think that's important for us to realize. It doesn't diminish the importance of trying to get better, get healthier. But another thing I'll point out is, those counties I quoted, I think, were all in the top 10 or 11. You go to those counties, we've all been there, they leaps and bounds above Gaston County in recreational areas. All those counties have so much more, and, you know, we've got that debate forever, is it the public's duty to go out and build greenways and parks and things like that? But from a health standpoint, having a healthy community and having something that people want in their community, that's something we have to consider going down the road instead of just shying away. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, thanks for being here.
Yes, sir.
And a good report. Sound like you've had some experience with radar detectors.
I know people who have.
Oh, okay. But I just want to add to one of the points you made about, it takes time to change the culture and activity in the community. And I know that I worked with Bill Seabrook in a group, keeping the family intact, dealt with divorce and unwanted teenage pregnancy, and you had some good volunteer people out there that was helping to drive that issue. And I think it's paying off by the figures you've shown us, and I just want to commend you for the work in your department and working with the schools and the police and others and making that happen.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, Commissioner Carpenter, but to your point, it takes a community. It's not just one agency. The individuals and the agencies that you mentioned have been a huge part of this, so that's what it takes to make a change. And unfortunately, it also takes time, and in this day and age, that's not always a luxury.
Well, thank you. That gyroscope is kind of moving, so I think you got it in the right direction.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Our next item is Access, one year later presentation.
Okay.
Mr. Chris Dobbins.
Yeah, I would love to be able to help with this, huh? Let's try to navigate the system for you. At five? There we go. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, two for Tuesday. So Access, one year later. A year ago this time, we were informed, we were the proud parents of Access Transportation. This evening, I brought two of the people that really have made this year an incredible success, Cherie Wilson and Michael, our administrator and supervisor in charge of really bringing, I think, some very positive outcomes to our transportation, Medicaid transportation Several of the things that I'm going to talk about this evening are what we consider success. We certainly are not going to stop moving forward, but I thought it was appropriate that we give the commission some of the things that we're doing differently than we were a year ago. And one of the first things that we noticed that really needed some attention was the facilities in which our staff were living and operating out of. And over the course of the past year, you see before you some of the things that we've addressed. You know, it might not sound like much to put carpet and paint into an area, but if you could have seen the resources that they were living and existing in at the time, it would be a big deal to you. So thanks to the county leadership, our county Public Works, the things that you see before you were all either updated, replaced, or repaired, to include what I consider some of the more important things, improved safety. We did not have any cameras. The lighting was very, very poor for our staff that come in at wee hours of the morning and go home late in the evening. So kudos to leadership for recognizing the importance of that. We also had a lot of support from our local law enforcement, who would patrol the area, come through the area, and provide that additional eyes, supporting our staff as they come and go with very difficult hours. Last but not least, proximity cars. That's access to the facility. You know, there was, obviously, a concern for who could get into the building. Now, only those individuals that are assigned to access or required to have access to access have those proximity cars, so very pleased about the improvements with the facility. You can see here just a couple of examples of our cameras that have been installed. This allows our staff inside to monitor the area. It also allows us to track the coming and goings of our parking lot, as well as the protection of our resources and our vehicles. Some of the efficiencies that we've instituted in the past year, and this may sound a little, well, duh, why didn't you have a time clock? These are the kinds of things that help us become more efficient. What a lot of people don't think about is, we don't have a set shift, if you will, for our access transporters. You may only require one driver to be in at 4:00 a.m., therefore, they have a different work schedule and different hours than other drivers. So tracking those individual times and those individual hours are very critical to make sure that we maximize our time sheets, as well as what we're paying our staff in compensation. Also, what you'll see here is obtaining a higher percentage of Medicaid verification forms. The reason that that's important is for reimbursements, and I'll show you the slide that that relates to here in just a moment. Route Match is basically a software system that allows us to maximize scheduling. It takes the guesswork out of where our people are and who's best suited to take the next route. Also, our quality assurance indicators. We're very much interested in what we're doing right and what we need to improve upon, and the only way you can do that is to measure it. So we've instituted that. The other last bullet there is our DOT compliance review. It was the first review we've had in several years. We are very excited about a good review there and the efforts that have been made to keep us in compliance with North Carolina law. Route Match here, I just spoke about that in our time clock, so these are efficiencies that have helped us lower dollars. This slide here speaks to the energy and effort of our staff. We greatly reduced our disallowed billing. Essentially, that is dollars that walked out the door. The county was not able to recoup, from a high in December of last year of almost $16,000 to a low of $4,000. Basically, we were losing 28% of our billable services by not managing this program better. We have since, as you can see, since January, have reduced that to a low of 8%. Our goal is to manage that around 5%. I'm not sure 0% is attainable, because we do have some challenging customers, if you will, that are noncompliant, but as you can see, a lot of work has gone into this area to save our dollars as well as expenditures. This one as well speaks to using our resources more effectively. This is a better use of our propane/gasoline resources. We decreased the use of gasoline by 86% last year, by using propane, which is a much cheaper fuel, by 270%. Take a look at those costs, that's almost $100,000 in savings with more effective use of fuels. So that's a true dedication to the staff for using these resources, not coming up with excuses, because it does require a little extra effort on their part to use a different pump, but as you can see, those are pretty substantial savings to the county. As well as, our gasoline-powered vehicles generate an average of 17% more CO2 emissions, so it's even better for the air we breathe. This is another area we place a lot of focus on, is our customer service. My suspicion is, you can probably tell me how we're doing in this area better than anybody. It's based on the number of calls you don't get, and I would submit to you, we're doing very well in that area. Does that mean we don't have complaints? No, it doesn't. It means we're more responsive, we take it more seriously, and we put a very, very focused effort on making sure our staff is trained to deal with the clients and our customers in a much more friendly and understanding role. We've also seen some really good work with our veteran community. We've got some ideas moving forward on how we might even do better. We're looking at the potential of having a dedicated staff member that handles all veteran services transport, as well as having a dedicated vehicle that we're looking to get wrapped in veteran materials that really calls out to the service that those individuals provided, and still in keeping with our resources at hand. One of the final areas that we felt needed some attention was our staff development, our program coordinator getting her time, training, that allows her to provide a little more vision and a little less just bailing the water out of the boat, so to speak. This is really, in my opinion, one of the things that has allowed us to really move the agency forward. Salute to Cherie and her support, her willingness to go to these educations, go to these trainings, receive coaching, receive leadership, because that's not always the case, depending on where you are in the world, but Cherie has been most receptive and most motivated, and has certainly accepted that with open arms and taken on the challenge and really served as well as the leader over there. We've also instituted a safety officer, in my opinion, another position that was sorely needed. Our accidents, our reports to the Transportation Safety Board were up. These are things that certainly cost and can potentially cost even more, not only in money, but also in life. So this is an area that we took very seriously. We've created this position, got the safety officer training, and if you'll look at the very bottom of this slide, a 36% decrease in risk management claims. Essentially, that's a reduction in accidents, and that's something that we take very seriously. As you might imagine, with 500 to 600 transports a month, that's, excuse me, a day, that's a pretty active transportation schedule, and accidents, while they may become not necessarily your fault, defensive driving and how you address these areas are certainly cost-effective measures that we need to take seriously, and our staff has done that. Other staff development, ADA training. You might not think that that's something important, but I believe you will probably remember a certain incident that took place a couple of months ago, where there was an individual on one of our transports that had a mental health issue, and how you address and deal with and make sure you handle those type clients is important, be that with law enforcement, the individual, or other clients. So this ADA training, we believe, will help us not only in that area, but also with our customer service efforts. We're not done. We are not going to rest where we currently are. One of the areas that we're going to take very seriously is our secret shopper program. We want people to ask for transportation. We're going to conduct that and find out where our weak spots are, and we're going to continue to work on that. We are also going to upgrade our individual vehicles with tablets for Route Match. Essentially, what that will do is, it will give us real-time data that tells us where our vehicles are. It allows the system to place us in the best place, shortest traveled distance, best responder, again, more efficient. And the one that I mentioned earlier, we want to get our disallowed billing below 5%. That in the neighborhood of about $10,000 a month is what we will be saving. And then, as I mentioned, move toward a more veteran-centric transportation system, so that our veterans are basically addressed as individuals and not just thrown on another bus to go to another location. And that concludes our update, one year later. Be happy to take your questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Brown?
Well, thank you again. I'll be honest, I'm very pleased. And you well know, I've talked to you about it at length, but I guess I was going to ask, you know, what kind of action plan we have to get better? And I saw that, and that was even a little bit better, but I want to know, what are you most pleased or proud of, one year later, that Access oversight? What is it?
Two things. One, leadership support. You don't do these things without leadership support. Everything from the commission, manager's office, Public Works, everybody has said, what do we need to do to help? And then the second thing is the staff. You know, they have to trust you. They have to believe that what you're doing is going to work and make it better, and they did. And Cherie and her folks came to bat, hired a new administrator, and I said, oh, by the way, you've got transportation? He's like, huh? What's that? Michael rolled up his sleeves, we have been so fortunate to have people that both provide us the support and then believe in what we're doing, and what you saw tonight is the results of that. So we're not done. I would like to think we've made some pretty good progress, but we're going to get better. And I think with your support, I think with the support of the staff, you're going to see even better results as we move forward. So thank you, great question.
I'll look for another $100,000.
Another $100,000?
Thank you.
Don't set the bar too high.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Dobbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This time, are there any other matters before the board? Commissioner Keger?
I just wanted to ask the board, are we going to revisit the spousal insurance? You know, at one time, I think, five commissioners were willing to put it on a resolution, and I just want to know if we're going to follow up on that, or is that dead?
Well, I tell you, we've looked that over, and it's not sustainable in the system that we have. I know it's been tough, but I can tell you, since Obamacare, my son and my daughter, two of my sons and daughters, they lost their insurance. They just told them, you know, they're going to have to get new insurance, and they had to go out and get it, and with bigger deductibles, I think, $5,000 or $6,000, you know, paid, you know, before they could access, and it's, the healthcare in this country has gone crazy, and I don't know how, as a county and a representative of the citizens, that we can continue to, you know, deal out money to spouses that are disabled to work and should be getting their own insurance.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to get into the discussion on it, if we're not going to go there, just as simple, is it over? Or is there anybody interested in visiting it?
From my, from my polling of the board, I don't think there's any interest.
Just wanted to ask the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. Commissioner Brown?
I had something else other than that. I would like to talk about that, but that's, I want to talk about my issue. Two things. One, we've been talking about this image committee, and I think, are you on that with those people over there, the Image Committee for Gaston County Development?
I'm not on that committee.
And I just noticed something, as I've been talking to people in different aspects. If you pull off one of our interstate, I don't know who provides the interstate issue for the Access ramps. All right. You're cheering for me, but what I wanted to ask was, I've noticed that the, and it's not just here, so I just thought it was something for our image that I really noticed was, there's a, basically a bare spot worn up and down, if you go to Cox Road, and you'll see from the stop sign to 100 feet down, back and forth, about, you know, 100 feet there. But, you know, I understand people are... But, you know, I understand people are down on their luck and doing things, but I started watching this, and every day at 12 o'clock to about 1:00 they're there, 4:30 to 6 o'clock they're there. There's about nine million water bottles. And I went to, went back to Belmont, they're standing there. They're, so I just wanted to ask the board if we could figure out a way, maybe the state DOT, ever how we can address that to maybe improve the way we look from the interstate since we have so many accessing passengers coming through there, to all get together with anybody who accesses a, and basically you had to use the whole county committee, because that's where it's going to start, is the people coming through that we can clean it up, look better on those areas, and even just some of the points in between to maybe doing something with the state. I don't know how that works and getting with, but I'd just like to ask the board to do that. And my next thing is, I was really disturbed the other day. I was at a customer of mine, and we were sitting there, and they were talking about the county, and said that they couldn't bid the work that was going on, and they have ample space to do the work. They do a lot of work here in Gaston County for a lot of people here, but Gaston County was not one of the ones they could work for. And I started asking questions, and lo and behold, that person just happened to call that day and was rather rude to, our people were rather rude to the vendor or customer on the other side. And so I wanted to ask Earl if we could put in some, over the next 12 months, we put in something that's more of an action plan that we work on how we speak to people, we work on using vendors inside of Gaston County, where possible, at least getting a bid from these people. We're not even getting a bid. But this gentleman basically just said he didn't care what the customer wanted inside of the county, and he wasn't going to use him as a vendor, and he uses a vendor in Mooresville. I find that quite disturbing as a Gaston County taxpayer and actually as a county commissioner, that we are doing business in Mooresville when the same, there's 15 of these companies inside of Gaston County that we could at least get one bid from. And I was rather disturbed to hear that, but I'll talk to you more offline about who it was and sort of just, but I'd like to put an action plan of how we can talk to our customers, our vendors, in an appropriated way to where everybody, because we need our vendors and we need our customers, or actually the taxpayers, we need everybody to feel like they're a part of a family. And I think that's the one thing about Gaston County, if we're going to change our image, we're going to have to really start with the people inside. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other matters before the board? Thank you, gentlemen. With that said, this concludes our work session for tonight. The Reggler County Commission meeting will convene shortly. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buffett, 704-866-3196, and share them. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting to order. Our first item is the county commission will take citizen comment on the following issues. One is a municipal appointment, City of Bessemer City Planning Board ETJ, Town of Stanley, One Planning and Zoning Board ETJ, Two Board of Adjustments ETJ. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions will be directed to the chair for a response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. At this time, do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now in public hearing. Our first item is an extraterritorial jurisdiction appointment. The county commission will take citizen comment concerning applications submitted at or before the public hearing for two reappointments to the Bessemer City Planning Board representing extraterritorial jurisdictions. The Bessemer City Council has recommended Mr. Mac B Jenkins and Ms. Charlene Hill. Are there additional applicants to be received at this time? Hearing none. Are there any citizens wishing to comment? Any comments or questions from the commission?
I'll just make one comment. I do not know these individuals personally, but I vote against all appointments for ETJs because I personally think they should be unconstitutional. So my vote against these is not towards these individuals, it's actually towards ETJs.
At this time, I'll accept a motion, and a motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price, to reappoint Mr. Mac B Jenkins and Ms. Charlene Hill. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is, the county commission will take citizen comment concerning applications submitted at or before the public hearing for two reappointments to the Stanley Planning and Zoning Board and the Stanley Board of Adjustments, representing the extraterritorial jurisdictions. The Stanley Town Council has recommended Mr. Tony, I think it's Fronterberger, and Mr. John Miller. Are there additional applicants to be received at this time? Hearing none. Any citizens wishing to make comment? Hearing none. Any comments or questions from the commission? At this time, I'll accept a motion and a second. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Keger, to reappoint Mr. Tony Fronterberger and Mr. John Miller. All in favor? Any opposed? Our next item, excuse me, that is it. This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board would like to thank each of you for your input. At this time, do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is to approve the agenda as is or make revisions.
Motion to approve?
One, pull.
Okay. We're not there to pull yet.
Yes, we are.
Oh, we are?
Yes, we are. Mr. Brown, what item would you like to pull?
Item K.
We'll move item K. Do you want to just give him some clarity instead of?
We'll be there, ask her about that.
Would you like to speak to that, Commissioner Keger?
Every year when they present their budget request, it's in there. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you, Chad. It's in there every year.
Okay, this item is pulled, item K. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to pull.
Okay.
M.
M?
Yes, and I'd like to just, I'm not going to pull S. That has to do with the funding of the ADA issues at the high school. But I've requested some information. I want, you know, I tried to get some discussion among us over emails. Do we know for a fact? Have we reviewed the minutes of the meetings? Did we look at the video to see if that was anything that was included in those? That's, you know, we don't need to play the guessing game. We can just look at the record, and Mr. Mathers, I guess, would have that information.
Are you pulling it?
No, no, not if we get an explanation.
I'm pulling it.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to respond to the question?
Commissioner Brown, you going to pull it?
I'm going to pull it.
We'll just deal with it.
Okay.
That is, tell me what item it is.
S.
Okay, so I have item K pulled by Commissioner Brown, item M pulled by Commissioner Keger, item S pulled by Commissioner Price. Any other items you'd like to pull during our time? Hearing none. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with items K, M, and S moved to the nonconsent agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 23rd, 2015. Motion made by Commissioner Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Motion carries. Minutes passed. Our next item is citizen recognition, and no one has signed up to speak, so we'll move to the consent agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Our next item will be the nonconsent agenda. This is a county attorney's amendment to the Gaston County Traffic Control Ordinance. The reason this is on here, we were challenged, from my understanding, that we did not have the authority to tow vehicles from the courthouse, parking lot, or levy a fine and things of that nature. So we just fixed the language in this amendment. Am I correct in that?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm sorry, I did not, I accidentally did not have my mic on for those that are viewing the, this on TV. Our next item is items pulled from consent agenda. We'll begin with item K pulled by Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, I just pulled it just for lack of information, even though it's been in the budget several years, years go by, and that gets pushed out. So I just, I had asked Mr. Mathers, had he received anything? But the last thing that we asked that night when we were here was, what more information could we give? Because it was brought up the night of, so just, that's why I pulled it for discussion. Mr. Mathers, I want to talk.
Mr. Mathers?
You know, I have not received anything this year that was specific to that additional $244,000. However, I think that the college, like many entities, has an ongoing capital improvements plan, and over the last four years, I believe, the capital request has not been fully funded by the county. So therefore, they were requesting a restoration of that full funding for the capital side of their budget, and I am sure that that money would be used to fund portions of their capital improvement plan, which is established.
Does this put us in a hole with our other requirements that we have going on? If it wouldn't have, it would have been in the budget before, correct? Just asking, just asking an honest question.
And your, an honest answer is, yes, we do have some significant financial challenges. You know, a quarter million dollars is not going to break the bank necessarily, but it does help to compound the problem. We need to do our level best to get out of the financial hole that we're in.
Is there anything we have in place to help maybe satisfy this? I know Mr. Dobbins talked about, he had maybe $100,000 savings. Is that look, is that foreseeable that we can overcome this? Because like I said, my thing is, is about dollars and cents now. If that's what we have to do, we need to go there, so be it, we'll go. But I'm just saying, I just, I just feel like this puts us in a hole off the bat.
Commissioner Keger?
And I can't be 100% sure, but the capital need is well over $1 million right now. Got to remember, their campuses have grown significantly over the five years we held that money back, and we did it just for one year to cure our budget woes. And they've got a much smaller budget, and even though $244,000 is a drop in the bucket for a $300 million budget, it's very significant for the operations of the college. And I don't know the exact, Joe's on the foundation. Do you happen to know what it is?
The capital needs?
Yeah.
Well, we got several different, you've got some, this is maintenance mainly, what this money is for. You know, just keeping up the, new rust, choppers, and elevators.
Granted, we've given them funds for two or three elevators in the last five years, but they've got maybe 12 elevators that have been there 50 years. Eventually, you know, the steam systems, the pipes that have been underground for 50 years. When you drive through that campus in the winter when it's chilly, and you see that smoke coming up, that's not smoke, that's steam leaving the system. And that steam is water, chemicals, the fuel to heat the boilers. I mean, it's costing, you know, tens of thousands of dollars every year we wait to fix these things.
I guess what I had rather see is some more, and I'll vote for it tonight because I think they need it, but I'm just saying.
I will have it sent to you.
Well, no, just some more project-specific things. I mean, is that understandable? Because we getting a lot of things, we have one going on right now, as we well know, without a scope. Thank you.
I'll have Ms. McCurry send you that.
Commissioner Price?
Yes. If it was in, as Commissioner Keger said, it was in their original budget request, and our manager or assistant manager cut it out, I'd like to know.
Well, it's not that they cut it out, they were told to keep a level budget. So if it wasn't in last year, it wasn't going to get added this year automatically by the majority of the board's wishes on staff.
Well, if it was cut out, is there a valid reason it wasn't needed? Or, well, if they got along without it, why can't it get along with that another year?
Because we've said that five years in a row. When do we, when do we just bite the bullet and take care of the maintenance things?
Well, I don't, I don't agree, I mean, I agree to taking care of facilities, but that's not our own facility that we need to take care of.
Then it just, all I can say, Mr. Price, it just comes down to the majority of the board's vote, that's all.
Well, you know, I'm, is there been any, is there stipulations on tuition that students pay? Is there a stipulation that the board can't go with so high?
Yeah, it's all set by the General Assembly.
Okay, go ahead.
And I believe they increased it this year. But we don't see that money.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve item K.
So move.
A motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Our next item is item M. This is pulled by Commissioner Keger. Mr. Keger?
What you want, M?
M, please.
What amount, if we still are, is the commission on the family, through the commission on the family, are we dedicated to nonprofit charitable organizations?
I think it's $60,000.
Okay. This is a charitable task, and it goes on every year or two, and I think, you know, we're not going to give money to any other charitable function, and I would just think that we need to be consistent, and this $10,000 should have been submitted. And also, what are the revenues? What is the bank account, the savings or fund balance of Gaston Family Health Service these days? I mean, and I don't expect you to know that, Mickey.
Oh, I know that, but I had it, but we were 50. Well, $52,000 revenues was over expenses, and we were still waiting on a check from North Carolina Medicaid, and we had to borrow, we have a $300,000 line of credit, and we had to borrow $100,000, issue $100,000 to take care of some lap, salary and laps until we got that payment. But this, this mission of mercy is not every year, it's every other year. And this is just a portion, and I thought we had agreed that it possibly could come out of the healthcare money that the hospital had given us.
Well, I just, you know, if that happens, I might be able to go along with it, but, you know, I deal with senior insurance every day, and there's so many folks that can't afford dental insurance, and we're going to take those folks' money and give it to other people that can't afford dental, dental care. I don't know, if we can take it out of the hospital money, but I don't know if this is something that we should do if it doesn't go through the commission on the family like a regular charitable grant. That's it.
Commissioner Brown?
Just a suggestion, just out there. We budget roughly $60,000 for the Family Advisory Board, $65,000, I don't know what that is, that number. We did make the Family Advisory Board for everybody to go through that. What if we did it this year? Because they don't know what their needs are anyway over there, because theirs are grants submitted. If we took the $10,000 from that pool and put it toward this money, because that's something we all believe in, that was where it comes down to anyway, would that be something we could do? Mr. Morehead? Thank you. Thank you. You don't need to put your jacket on.
You actually do need to put your jacket on. I'm kidding. I've got my jacket on.
And I guess I need to ask the board, is that something the board will feel comfortable with, since that's already money we have budgeted, and that's what it's for, would that be a better scenario?
We've actually recently sent out the contracts, because the Family Advisory Board has awarded the money for FY '16. I'm not exactly sure if the entire appropriation was awarded, but I can look up that in the morning and let you know if there's any remaining. But they usually award the entire appropriation.
Here's what we can do. We normally allocate 60. Just within this year's budget, we have allocated 60 for next year, because the grant cycle will happen in 2017, what they do in 2015. Am I correct? 2015 goes to 2016, 2016 goes to 2017.
The funds that they have received, starting July 1, are for fiscal year '16. Yes, sir.
Got you. Well, why don't we just, as that flips year to year, it's $60,000 a year, just the very next year, make it 50, and take $10,000. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
I would do that, because at the end of the day, all of those recommendations have to come to us, and we have to decide that, and I think that's a good idea. It doesn't affect fund balance, it comes out of what the money is allocated for, and this directly affects some of the poorest in our community that need this service.
Can we, same thing you're talking about, let's find out what that number is. I would just about guarantee, there's at least $10,000 in there left, because I know last year it was like $30,000, it was $20,000 left over. I don't know what that carries for, but if, let's see what, I don't know how we vote on that tonight, but if that's something we can get, get some access.
Here's what we can do, let's look at the carryover. If the carryover is there, we can use it out of that. If not, just the next year, reduce it to, they get $50,000 to use. Does that make sense? And what we can do is change the, where it says county funding, we can do a motion, you can amend this, a motion to appropriate one-time funding of $10,000 to the biannual North Carolina Missions of Mercy Dental Clinic, hosted by Gaston Family Health Service, with funds to come from any remaining monies out of the Family Advisory Board, or if there's no remaining monies, then the very next year, reduce that budget from 60 to 50. And that way, no one's out anything. Is that your motion, Commissioner Brown?
I will second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, let me understand. You know, I've looked at that program, what they do, and it is very important to many citizens that would otherwise get some care, right, Mickey?
Right, very important.
Okay. And I want to see it continue, and I don't know whether shifting this money, if it'll get the job done, I'm for it, I just want to make sure that that's going to happen.
Also, Commissioner Keger, you can pass along to some of the seniors that this year they'll be doing dentures and partials, if any of Cleveland.
Next week, 63.
It's going to be the biggest, if it fulfills its potential, they're going to have 80 chairs, or they normally try to get 60, but they're going for 80 chairs in September, dental chair. Be the biggest one in North Carolina's ever had.
Okay, so are we clear on that motion, Don? The motion is to amend item M.
If Joe understands it, at his age, she understands it.
Yeah, what we're doing, Joe, instead of taking it out of fund balance, tonight.
You're going to take it out next year, I understand, but I just want to make sure it covers the program.
It covers.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Even Commissioner Dobbins voted for it. Our next item was pulled by Commissioner Price, item S. Commissioner Price.
Well, I guess, I just wonder why the issue got passed to us. The school board has a fund balance, the school board could have come up with $60,000. In June, when we approved the budget, we took 1.2 million, 1.5 million from capital, put it in operation with the understanding that if anything capital came up, they were to take care of it. That's my opinion, and what I thought was to happen. So how does this get passed to us each and every time? I know commissioners, boards of commissioners are responsible for brick and mortar, but this, to me, should have been taken care of by the Board of Education.
Mr. Mathers, would you like to respond?
Yes, I would like to respond. It is an interesting situation, and, you know, finances aside, and whether or not the school district could absorb up to $60,000 capital improvement requests for North Gaston High School athletic facilities, the key point to remember here, I think, is that the county is actually the ADA coordinator. We're the clearinghouse, if you will, for all ADA issues in county facilities throughout the county, regardless of whether or not they're directly controlled by the county. So that extends to the municipalities as well as to the school district. And in the course of discussions that we have, not that the school district has not been involved, because they have, but we are the ones who essentially are cited with any problems that are identified by, through the complaint process, or by the ADA officials. So we are going to be, you know, involved in this process regardless of where the problem might be identified. But in this particular case, I think there was another question, if I may, regarding whether the scope of work for the project that occurred in the fall of 2013 included these particular ADA improvements, and to the best of our knowledge, it did not. While, you know, there isn't a lot of clarity in the minutes of those meetings, or, and there was not, you know, a clearly defined scope of work either, to the best of our knowledge, all the work that was called upon to be performed was performed, and indeed, I think most people that are acquainted with that project believe that we got a significant bang for our buck for the $500,000 that was expended. And indeed, you know, in this particular case, I believe Mr. David Hoyle Jr. managed the project free of charge and coordinated all those resources which were brought to bear. We have a stack of invoices approximately three-quarters of an inch thick for all the work that was performed at North Gaston. However, that scope did not include the ADA improvements to the bleachers that have been identified in this complaint, which originated with a Gaston County resident. So, those are my points along these things. One more thing that I would add is that, you know, as we go through this process, I believe that Mr. Skiba has worked closely with the ADA folks, done an admirable job of that, and has in fact presented a plan for this particular project that is acceptable to the ADA folks. But if this were to not be approved, and if we cannot demonstrate to them that we in good faith are moving forward, that will in fact open us to a great deal of scrutiny that I think would be very much unwanted.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, you finished, Commissioner Price?
No.
You're not finished? Go ahead.
Thank you. Are we required to take it out of our fund balance?
No.
What other fund balance can we take it out of?
None.
We can't take it from the school system?
We could ask.
We could ask.
Well, I strongly suggest we ask, for at least half of it. I saw him, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Brown.
I guess I want to start out by saying, we have done more for ADA compliance, maybe not everything, because I'm going to tell you, it doesn't matter where you go, what you put out there, that scope is going to move. I mean, we have, now there's ADA accessible handicap bathrooms out there that were not there for, the school was built in '71, so it's changed last year, so you can look at it, it's 42 years that had been that way, and it's changed. The concession stand now has the accessibility for someone to get there. The bleachers in the opposing stands have now able to get there. I've talked with Mr. Skiba at times, at what point does somebody say is equal? And I understand this, some people in wheelchairs can't get into a stadium that's a two-up, three-back. Two-up, three-back, the whole ass of concrete stadium, I think has been there forever. Now, I understand, I had asked Mr. Skiba, could we maybe make a modification to a certain area of the field that would be less costly for us at the time? Because we have shown good faith, as Mr. Mathers calls it, we've worked really hard in ADA compliance on a lot of places. So I would say going forward, we are doing things, and we're pushing the meter, maybe not to the scope of, somebody can go up 14 rows and sit in a seating, but guess what? They can't do it at Bank of America Stadium, they can't do it at Sims Park, they can't do it at Yankee Stadium. It doesn't matter, it's just not part of what happens in the ADA compliance. They have special areas. So I had asked Mr. Skiba to ask the lady from the ADA, is that accessible? So I would say right now, we table this for more information, because like I said, we haven't been able to get the information needed that is stating this. Now, I will say this, David Hoyle Jr. has done enormous amounts out there to help the county and other people to get over the hump of not having to worry about ADA compliance, our money that we put. So I would put him in a realm of saying, he's done the right thing by what the money was used for out there. We have some more places to go? Sure. But I will say this, that scope is going to move every day. I don't care what you say, that scope is going to move. We could put $10 million into it today, and it'd be different tomorrow on what we have to do. So I say this, either table it, or figure out a way to see what we can get out of this from concessions, and say, hey, how can we do some things a little different in having designated areas that are compliant for what goes on with the ADA out there.
Commissioner Keger.
What was the total amount that we allocated? $500,000?
That's several field.
Okay, and, you know, we're just looking at the college for 244 after 50 years, but Earl sent us a follow-up email, I believe, didn't you? With the amount that was spent, and I think it was like $489?
$495,000.
$495,000, okay. I've got no problem with what Mr. Brown's suggesting. I am a little disappointed, there's no one here from the schools to make the request. Is there? That is a little disappointing and discouraging, but if they have a healthy fund balance, I don't see why we shouldn't make the request for them to cover it and use that remaining $5,000 to go with it. If that turns out not to be acceptable, I would suggest that we give them $55,000, you know, they've got the five left over from the projects. But I would make the request. They do have a fund balance.
Any other comments? Commissioner Carpenter.
My only concern, there was some issue about them being able to use the ball field this year.
Well, no, but they have the money now, they can use it if they want to.
Okay, well.
If they don't, then it falls on us.
Okay, well, you know, I'd hate to see them try to, I know they can use other fields, but there's a lot to have in it, their own home field.
I don't think any of us want that to happen.
Keger. You finished, Commissioner Carpenter?
I think I am.
Let's have a couple of comments. I don't necessarily disagree with Commissioner Price as far as the school paying. Here's my concern. I know enough probably just to be dangerous, and from my understanding, from what I have been told, is that for $60,000, we can fix this issue. But if we don't fix this issue, or if we brush it off, then this $60,000 issue has a huge chance of turning into hundreds of thousands of dollars, or, excuse me, millions. Not only that, according to Title II, whether we like it or not, it says, everything must be ADA acceptable. That's what the title says. I don't know the law with it. Here's my concern. If you have a complaint, and regardless of who makes the complaint, regardless of who pays for it, we know it's an issue, and we kick the can, what is the possibility of that costing the taxpayer? Could it be more? I don't know. For me, there was a complaint, we have a solution, it's $60,000. I don't see, in my mind, it would be better just to fix that and let sleeping dogs lie versus making someone mad and going through a lot of issues that could cause us more issues down the road. That's just my thought. With that said, I would have no problem approving it pending, just changing where we get the money. On our agenda, we could approve it and just say, instead of fund balance appropriation, school board fund balance. We could put that language here, I'd have no issue with that. I would also have no issue, which is what's happened in the past, a lot of times, especially when I'm out in the community, people are talking about, well, when you're funding education, well, have you really given more than you've given the year before? When we pay for things at these facilities this way, this doesn't go into account for that funding. So the least we should do is give the money to the school board and let them pay it. That way, we can keep track of every dollar we give towards education. So we just need to figure out a way to pay for that. Commissioner Price.
Yes. Commissioner Brown's scenario with, what do you call it? Designated area, can that be worded in the resolution some way as to show that we're trying to solve the ADA complaint?
Is your question, for example, I'll read this.
Okay.
To authorize the county manager to expend up to $60,000 for ADA-related improvements at North Gaston High School accessible bleachers, and/or look for work with, work, have our co-informants to work to find some type of resolution.
Compliance.
Compliance to a resolution that is different. I guess the one we're looking at, just so you guys know.
It was, at the most, $5,000 for the, I mean, it would be just boom, and you could do it in a designated area, and you have it done. So, just an example.
If that's acceptable to the ADA complaint, that was satisfied. I don't know how you word it, but I'm.
So the motion would be, if we would amend it, to authorize the county manager to expend up to $60,000 for ADA-related improvements at North Gaston High School with...
To meet compliance, ADA compliance.
To meet ADA compliance.
Right. Good. Good.
Would that suffice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I would like to, instead of taking the money from our fund balance, is to give that to the schools, and then in turn, them pay for it. That way, we can account for the monies that we're giving towards education.
But we still have to take it from the fund balance.
Right. But if we just go pay for it alone versus give to the school board, I would rather everything go through the school board and let people know, these are the dollars that are going, you know, these are your tax dollars, it's going to the school system, and this is where it's going. Would that, how would we change that on this board action?
Just read it again.
I don't think there would be any issue with channeling the money through the school board.
But this, okay, so I can just keep it fund balance appropriation?
Yes.
But what the expectation would be that it would go through the Gaston County School Board. And that way, at the end of the year, when we add up what we're giving education, we can account for everything. Instead of, we give them this pot of money, and then all year long, we're doing this, this, and this, and it's never counted towards education. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, the budget change you have in your pocket, has that go into the school system?
Okay.
So it will be accounted for that way?
So, okay, so it will be accounted that way? Okay, I'm good. Okay. At this time, I'll introduce an amendment to the resolution to authorize the county manager to expend up to 60,000 for ADA-related improvements at North Gaston High School to meet ADA compliant issues.
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Any opposed? It was a yes? Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is items added for vote by majority vote for discussion only. At this time, if I'm correct, Sam, if a majority adds something to the agenda, we can vote on it?
It has to be unanimous.
But it has to be unanimous?
Correct, yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask the board to consider a resolution titled to cancel the August 11, 2015 work session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby cancels this August 11, 2015 work session, mainly due because staff has told me there's really nothing on the agenda. So worst-case scenario, you may have one or two presentations, just like we did this meeting, versus having a meeting and nothing on the agenda.
I'm good.
Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Keger. All in favor? Okay, that was adding it to the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Some move.
To cancel August 11, 2015 work session. Motion made by Commissioner Keger. Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Motion passes. Our next item is appointments. We'll begin with Commissioner Brown.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
I'd like to appoint to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Effie Locklear.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Is that it? Commissioner Price? Commissioner Carpenter, any appointments?
I think I have three. To the Health and Human Services Board, Dr. Anne Hoshay, reappointment. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, reappointment, Brian Denton. And Juvenile Crime Prevention, Phil Coleman.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, excuse me. Motion was made by Commissioner Carpenter, it was seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You know what? I'm looking at the pink sheets on here, and those were for last month.
Look at that one there.
Look at that one right there, Joe.
Okay, I don't have any.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter has no appointments.
This here, a gadget.
Commissioner Keger?
Sorry.
I don't have one, but if I may ask Mr. Dobbins to find a member of the Health Department, Environmental Health Section, for the SARA Local Planning Committee. Doc was the previous. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, I have several appointments, but I will make them all in one if you will give me that pleasure. At this time, I will make a motion to appoint Jim Pallanack to the Environmental Review Advisory Board, Charles Martin to be reappointed to the Health and Human Services Board, Carol McManus to be reappointed to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Mahisha Edwards to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Nicole Bolt to Travel and Tourism Advisory Board, and Paul Dunn, recommended for appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Motion is unanimous. Okay, there's some, okay, this is chairman vacancy, Transportation Advisory Committee.
That's the one that I believe Mr. Brown was on, and he stepped down from that. There is some, there are some really unnecessary requirements for filing personal information that, to me, is a waste of taxpayers' money, but our legislature, some of them saw fit to put it in there that we file all of this information. Every one of us, whether we're on the City Council or County Commission, are sworn to office, and why in the world they go through that procedure is just a waste of time and taxpayer dollar? I asked for information about how much they were spending down there on Raleigh, of just administering that across the state, and it probably gets into a million dollars or more, and it's useless. But anyway, I can understand, I started not to fill mine out, but, and you're not the only one, Allen Frady refused to do it, and.
It's a great board, but for all the information required, and then you have to have it in, and it's just mind-boggling, so that's why.
And if you don't get it in right, there's a big, what, $250, $250 fine for, it's just crazy. And our, some of our legislatures felt like they need to be doing that.
Okay. We need a designation of voting delegate to the NCACC Annual Conference.
I'll nominate Joe.
I'll second.
Can you give me an alternate?
Any discussion? You want to alternate?
Well, is anybody?
I'll second. So the motion is to make Joe the delegate to the NCACC Annual Conference, and Commissioner Keger the alternate.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, we have Commissioner Committee Reports. Commissioner Brown?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attended the Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors Meeting, where we had a new chairman elected, Dr. Hoshay rotated off. Our chairman of the board now is Dr. Dirk Klassing, and our vice chairman is Dr. Kim Moore, our veterinary representative. Also, in the finances, these figures are through the end of May. The Public Health Division is operating 76% of budget, have 17% vacancy rate, funds totaling a little over $1 million in lapsed salary savings. In the Social Services side, we have a 7% vacancy rate, a little over $1 million in lapsed salary savings, for a total of a little over $2.1 million in lapsed salaries for the year. We have 200, at the end of May, 286 children in DH, DSS custody, and through that time of year, we have eight have been adopted out. Also, we voted to have a $55,000 bad debt write-off for the year, ending June 30. Also attended Gaston Family Health Service Meeting. We are having our Employee Appreciation Annual Luncheon, August 14, at the Gastonia Conference Center, if any of you would like to attend, 12 noon. We also, the Diabetes Center got recertification for another three years for approval, and we are still waiting on, as I mentioned earlier, some North Carolina reimbursement funds for North Carolina Medicaid. We're expecting a little over 400, $400, $500,000 in lapsed payments, which will put us in the black, but right now, we're operating a little bit in the red, as I mentioned a while ago, with that drawdown of our funding. Also, as we approve tonight, the Dental Mission of Mercy is September 25 and 26. If anybody would like to volunteer, all volunteers are greatly appreciated, and we do have, I think, Outback, Bojangles supplies the breakfast food, Outback does the lunch, and the Gims has a unit stationed there, all day, both days, so we do participate in care of services. Anyway, so, that's all, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carpenter?
Sure, I would like to lift something before this board and report that in economic development, Mr. Hicks has quite a bit of activity going on, but we're in deep trouble in this state with the things they call incentives. Donnie, he is frustrated because of, I think the JDX money has run out, is that right? And we have some people that's looking to locate, but you know, you've got South Carolina and other states, it's got that, and the holdup is in, primarily in the state senate. I talked with Representative Torbit today, and he thinks the House is in good shape, but this, they're putting us out of business as far as trying to bring some jobs and capital investment to our state. I don't know whether it'd be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to send a letter to our senators, we can send all the representatives, and suggest that they need to carefully review that and make sure that we're competitive. You saw where Volvo went to South Carolina, Mercedes to Georgia, and there's been others that's went elsewhere that we're considering, North Carolina. But it seems that the, some of the legislatures call it a philosophical problem, you're not giving money away. Those people earn that back by bringing people here and making capital investment. And so, I consider partnering with industry, it's expensive to expand or relocate in our state, and, or any state, and we need to be competitive and try to get some of those good jobs here. So I just put that out, I don't know whether a letter from this board, in fact, I propose that we send a letter to them and ask them to consider some things that would help us. Maybe Mr. Hicks happened to word that, so if the board, you know, I'd like for you to ask for that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Earl, if you could get what Donnie, get a letter put together, and just bring it for my signature, and we'll sign it and get it off?
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Keger?
Most of the boards I serve on had July off. Joe said everything about the EDC meeting I was going to say, and actually, he stole my report and read it. So that's it.
Okay. I have two. I did get a call from Dr. Nunzick today, who is the chairman of the committee looking over the adoption benefit. From my understanding, it has been a pretty contentious meetings, which I don't know if that's necessarily bad, I think maybe disagreement's good. He is scheduled, I think, September work session to bring forward all recommendations, whether one person agreed, or four people agreed, or whatever, just to bring all recommendations to the commission, and then at that point, we can look at the facts and go from there and decide if we want to do anything at all, or not deal with it, whatever. But I do, I would like to thank Dr. Nunzick and those that have served on the committee. It's a challenge, I think they're all passionate about what they're doing, and I think we'll get some good information from the committee. With that said, certificates of completion were presented to students attending the 2015 Senator James S. Forrester Commissioners School of Excellent Graduation on June 25, 2015. At this time, I'm going to direct the clerk to set forth their names in the minutes, so if you will do that. At this time, county manager report?
Mr. Chairman, unless there are questions regarding my written report, I'll pass at this time.
At this time, the county attorneys report. Nothing to add?
Let me, let me. You're not that big a, no, I just want to thank Mr. Mathers, the article he had in the paper about our parking wreck was very well presented, and I suppose that is one department or area that we have more citizens in this county participating in than any other thing, unless it's over the Health Department or DSS, but that, I think about everybody, it sometime or another participates in these parts. It was a good article, and I want to thank you.
This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session, our next meeting is when, Don?
August 26.
Is that correct?
I don't know, I guessed.
25th. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next meeting is August 25, at 6:00 PM, at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. I'd like to thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, who just got back from Jamaica, at 704-866-3196, and share them. This meeting is adjourned.